It is, and sixth graders at two local schools are camping on Palomar Mountain this week. For sixty years, it's been a tradition for San Diego School District's sixth graders to come to Camp Palomar. This video was provided by the school district. Student campers spent four days and three nights learning about nature, the mountains, and how to get along with other people.
As part of today's observances, Mr. Obama called for a national day of service in honor of Dr. King. Volunteers throughout San Diego County took to the streets in response and took pledges to keep the spirit going on a year-round basis. We have a snapshot from our Gene Cubus.
And here's the background. Congress designated the King holiday as a national day of volunteer service back in 1994. Since then, it's mustered hundreds of thousands of Americans from all walks of life to give back to their communities in countless ways. Well, here's one we counted in our midst today.
My father saw me looking at a flyer last night about this and wanted to come out, and so here we are.
How important is this?
Um, as important as getting the whole country involved with getting back on track, which overdue, I think.
Now, the time when government at all levels is cash-strapped and desperate, if not demoralized, it seems to be up to we, the people, to take up peaceful arms in community service. In this case, grabber sticks and trash bags to clear a sixteen-block area of City Heights.
Together, we can make our city better and our nation better, and it takes us coming out on a day like today to really send that message loud and clear to President Obama as he goes in the office that the people are with him.
And he was with the people at a shelter for homeless teenagers in Washington, D.C., climbing a ladder to take down curtains and painting an entire wall himself. That tone of volunteerism echoed off the bulkheads of the USS Midway Museum here in San Diego, where giving back was the spirit of a rally honoring military veterans.
We don't have the luxury of not engaging volunteers in our community. I think that's going to be part of our solution, and that's what we need to do together.
Or finding that task to be its own reward.
It feels so good to give back to the community, and it starts sort of a cycle of, uh, I don't know, good work being towards one another, which is really important. It's what we need right now.
That's the spirit. Well, the City Heights Club was organized by the San Diego Imperial County's Labor Council, brought out dozens of volunteers, and if you would like to take part in community service going forward, check out our website, NBCSanDiego.com, and enter "volunteer" in the search box.
This is Ten News Live at Five.
Local elementary school students participated in a march today in honor of slain civil rights leader, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Approximately 2,000 students from throughout the San Diego Unified School District met at Knox Elementary today in Lincoln Park. They marched for more than a mile around the community. The event started thirty-two years ago and is meant to help children learn about Dr. King's legacy.
When you bring children of all backgrounds and different parts of the city, you bring kids from north of eight, south of eight, east of eight, in all those various directions. So this is inspiring for kids to get together and to just, you know, be with one another, to learn from one another.
Students also honored Monique Palmer, a seventeen-year-old high school student who was shot and killed in Valencia Park last month.
Well, Sean, we are at Fulton Elementary, inside Mrs. Hoffman and Ms. Herman's sixth-grade class, and I have to ask the students, what did you guys think about the inauguration ceremony? All right. A good reaction from a tough crowd. Now Fulton Elementary gathered for a special assembly today honoring the inauguration of President Barack Obama. Dozens of students participated this morning, singing the National Anthem, other and other inspirational songs, and holding up signs and photos of Barack Obama. Students were chosen to speak about their feelings on the ceremony and what they hoped for from the new president.
If you put your mind to it, you can accomplish what you want to.
One thing I never shared is that he's an idol to me.
The school step team also stepped for Obama. We talked to some students about the festivities, who told us what they thought about Barack Obama and what they know about our new president.
That President Obama is going to be our president today. I know that he's our forty-fourth president, and this year, his grandma just died, and he has, his wife's name is Michelle, he has two daughters, and that his two daughters' favorite, um, Disney Channel show is Hannah Montana, and that he was born in Hawaii.
I feel great because this is like, 'cause I'm, this is the first year I get to see an African-American president.
The world would be a better place, 'cause he's gonna be the president now.
And I'm with the two speakers who were featured during today's assembly. This is Jared Reyes. Jared, you made a really inspirational speech, but what does Barack Obama, how does he inspire you?
He inspires me by, he kept on going, he kept on driving for he wanted, for what he wanted to be. Well, it came all the way from racism, where certain races didn't have the choice, they didn't have certain priorities as the other race, and that's what's very inspiring.
Wow, very good answer, and I'm also joined now by Winta. And you told me that you were very proud about the fact that he is the first African-American president. What does that mean to you?
Um, it means to me, um, because we always had the same race of a president over and over again, but this time Barack Obama comes, and then he changes that, and he changes history.
All right, good answer, very eloquent speakers. We have, right now, we are joined by the school's principal. This is Caroline King. I know that you had all of the classes watch the inauguration speech. Why did you have that happen?
I thought it was very important that every student from preschool all the way up to our seventh graders was able to share this opportunity of a historical moment in time. This is something that they will always remember, that they were part of history in the making, and that our students have studied what it is to be a leader, and to see such a phenomenal leader such as Barack Obama today. To share this historical moment in time was just a wonderful time for all of us, the teachers, the staff, the community members. It was just awesome.
All right, thank you so much. And Dan and Michelle, you heard from the students and a lot of other people from the school. Of course, a lot of these students are very young, they don't necessarily understand the gravity of this moment, but I know later on, they are definitely going to realize they really witnessed history today.
Yeah, Rika, you know, you and the principal, in fact, just touched on a really great point. There are few landmark events in life where we get to say, "I remember where I was when," and today is absolutely one of those days, and a story that these children that you just talked to will be able to tell their children. I remember where I was when Barack Obama became President of the United States.
That's right, and boy, will that be a story to tell.
All right, Rika, thanks so much. Well, many people are watching history unfold at the Malcolm X Library downtown.
They're celebrating every hour until eleven o'clock tonight. Many people say they are excited about Obama's presidency. They hope he'll bring equal rights, employment opportunities, and new beginnings.
Day is like a new birth. It's a new day. It's an incredible day. It's hard to believe that it has come. I think it's the greatest day we've had, aside from the birth of this nation itself.
At Scripps Ranch High School, students and teachers gather together to watch the extraordinary event. President Obama has inspired many people and is reaching the youth of America.
This makes me proud to be youth in America. Like, it's something that I can relate to, and it's something that I feel really powerful for, and I think that with the change, it's an honor to be a part of this country now.
It seems like those buzzwords, "hope" and "change" that Obama has uttered are on everyone's lips from coast to coast.
No doubt, the inauguration of President Barack Obama is a great moment in history.
Will all board members please come up front, please? Thank you. Good morning, and I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out this morning, joining us. I know it's a beautiful day outside, and we have some very important things to do, so I'm glad you took the time from your schedule to actually come and join us this morning for our Saturday session concerning our budget. I would ask that you please stand now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, yes? Thank you. Okay, the thirty-minute window, thank you. Um, if I were, um, next thing I would like to mention is that we have a number of speakers, and because they are just received them, and they're not all, I'll start the first speaker, and some of you I may have to shorten. Are any of these on the same topic, or are they just a mixture of topics for these? It's a mixture of topics, okay, very good. Board members, since we have one item on the agenda's budget, we'll do the public comments first, and then we'll get into our budget discussion. The first speaker up this morning is Anne Marie Perry, followed by Dr. Ken Druck, followed by Paul Gerard, followed by Brianna Rae Schuman. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello. My name is Anne Marie Perry. I live at 445 La Crosse Avenue. I'm an elementary school teacher with twenty years' experience. My daughter is a fourth grader at Cadman Elementary. I'm going to begin by addressing my comments to a phone call I received several weeks ago. Dr. Greer left me a voicemail, promising me that although city schools would be making many cuts, the children would not be affected. Almost immediately afterwards, I learned of the proposal to close Cadman. I asked my daughter for her thoughts. She said, "Mom, this is the first time I've loved school. Mr. Bach, my friends, Mrs. McCabe, everyone is just so mom." Nice. Mom, that could be too. Could you try and help? That is why I'm here today. You see, my child will be affected by your decision. We had tried choicing out for previous grades. We found schools that did a good job teaching to the test, but not teaching to the student who was taking the test. This year was going to be our last chance at trying city schools, and what did we find? Cadman, a gem, an incredible atmosphere from the principal, to the classroom teacher, to the PTA president, to the custodians. Kendall has gone from wanting to be homeschooled to wanting to graduate fifth grade with her friends. She went from being a disinterested, average student to a thriving, highly-advanced one. I know how rare it is to find a school that can balance educational goals with a nourishing, positive atmosphere. Why not build upon it, or at least investigate other options? I've kept my promise to my daughter. My question to the board is, will you keep your promise to her? I'm going to conclude with a bit of advice from my dad. Twenty years ago, when I began teaching, I encountered my first major conflict. My father, an elementary school principal, said to me, "Anne Marie, just remember, as educators, your first and primary obligation is to your students." My dad, now a retired school principal, would advise all of you to do the same. As you carefully deliberate on how to make your forty-million-dollar cuts, just remember who we're all here for: the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Ken Druck, followed by Paul Gerard, followed by Brenna Schuman, followed by Bob Dingman.
Thank you very, very much for a few moments of your time this morning. I know you have a full agenda, so I'll be very brief. I am one of many, many people in the community just wanting to get up on your radar screen and tell you what you already know, and it's in regard to all the counseling and guidance programs. I represent a nonprofit. I founded a program in this community. There are so many nonprofits like us who could not exist without your school counseling programs. Erlene Dunbar and her whole crew are phenomenal people. They are the front line. We don't, we all know the pressure the kids are feeling. We know the suicide risk elements with the economy and everything that's going on are up. We know that you are our front line of screening and early identification. We know the kids are hurting. We, I'm not telling you anything, any, but any of us don't know, but I just want to be that voice that says, let's please, let's please keep all those resources alive and well and available to our kids. Let's catch these things early. Let's continue to give counseling and guidance all the support. I know the community is a thousand percent behind them, but please be a voice advocating them with us as well, as I know you already are. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Paul Gerard. I live in Del Cerro. I represent the Pacific Coast Harmony, the chorus of the La Jolla Chapter of the Barbershop Harmony Society, also known as the Society for the Preservation and Encouragement of Barbershop Quartet Singing in America Incorporated. Now you know why it's been shortened to Barbershop Harmony Society. I am the Youth in Harmony Chairman for my chapter, and I am also the Youth in Harmony Coordinator for San Diego County. About three years ago, Karen Childers-Evans from VAPA asked us what we could do to attract more boys to choir. We believe that Barbershop Harmony is an excellent tool to do that. Barbershop Harmony is a very American art form, and sadly, it's not represented in any curriculum that I've been able to find in this county. But it's primarily associated with male singers. You probably remember the Buffalo Bills and that elk. We aim to convince the boys that singing is a manly, even macho, sport, okay? It's the way we think we can get more boys into choir. So what we're doing to help is to provide music, learning materials, and coaching to the boys, both in the classroom and in extracurricular activities. We're also trying to develop training for teachers and standards-based course materials so that we can actually incorporate this into the curriculum. We also perform, provide performance opportunities to hone their presentation skills. We're gonna have what we call "Real Men Sing" clinics and "Young Men Vocal Ensemble Showcase" that we can highlight that it's young men that we're aiming for. We also have chapter shows, and we take high school quartets to high school quartet contests. But all this is a drop in the bucket compared to, you know, your budget. We don't really have a lot of resources, but we're trying to help where we can. We believe arts are essential to the, not just a well-rounded, but to an effective education. We need to maintain the balance of arts teachers in the schools. You may hear many people say that arts enable students to learn smarter. We really believe that. Studies find that connections between the brain, hemispheres, are more numerous. As I pondered what to say today, I realized that really good art requires you to get in touch with your emotions, and at the same time, do a technical skill. So I think that supports the idea that we're built that way. So I believe that that skill enhances all other learning. Arts are essential.
Thank you. Brianna Schuman, followed by Bob Dingman, followed by Bill Eko, and then Julie Greathouse.
Good morning. Hi. My name is Brian Rae Schukman. I live in Del Cerro. I had four children go through the San Diego Public Schools. I saw the children are born with various talents to nurture and give their gifts to the world. Their education depends on nurturing their God-given talent, whatever that is for the joy of all. I believe in the 1950s and 60s at least, education was the first responsibility of state government. Now it's been thrown on the scrap heap. Our state government is broken. I wish our Boards of Ed could strike against this foolhardy mess. I don't know quite what the next step is. This cutting and dicing is scaring and depriving not just you, but children and families and teachers, and threatens the future of all and the nation itself. As you work over the budget, I hope you will keep teaching what we as a people, as a society, as a city want more of now and always. Make sure the children can learn the skills that make the world a better place. Think of twenty years from now. A great city full of the arts always thrives in commerce, excites people, adds joy to the world and all its inhabitants. Reading, writing, and math are like hammers and levels and saws. They're tools, not an end in themselves. Nobody's drawn to your city to see tools except for hardware convention. But people are drawn to the city, full of the work of educated, schooled, and trained architects, and painters, and composers, and singers, and bands, and glass blowers, and actors, and costumers, and interior designers, and scores more skilled and trained people. It takes over three hundred people to put on an opera, plus one hundred musicians. You must hold these skills sacred. Please always think how the world will be in twenty years if you fail the children who are born to share a talent in the world for the pleasure of others, not just themselves, peaceful pursuits of the treasures that you mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Dingman, followed by Bob Eko, followed by Judy Greathouse, followed by Camille Harris, followed by Angela Bartolome.
President Jackson, before Cheryl starts the timing on me, let me make a few opening remarks, because some of the members of the board are meeting me for the first time, and it's my pleasure to appear before you. First of all, I'm Bob Dingman. I reside at 10292 Aviary Drive at San Diego, and I'm here representing my community of Scripps Ranch. As you can tell by my shirt, I have a very unique privilege in the San Diego Unified School District in that I have a school named after me, and I'm not even yet dead. I think it's one of the pleasures of my life that I've been able to work with a school district and so forth, and so I have the representatives from the parents behind me, and Bob Eko will say a few words for the, and Cheryl is passing out my remarks. The one thing I have learned over the years, because I'm clinically deaf from war wounds, and that is that it is always better that I put it in writing, and then you know exactly what I've said, rather than what you think I've said. So with, without further ado, Cheryl, you ready, ready to time me? Ready, go. We are well aware of the daunting tasks they presented you in planning for the use of our severely restricted funding, many times made even more difficult by mandated restrictions. Yet, we want to provide the highest standard, to focus attention. With the able guidance of our wonderful principals, terrific faculty, and without doubt, the finest supportive parental group in San Diego, we in San Diego, we in Scripps Ranch have in our schools achieved the very highest of academic achievements and test scores. We have assisted our teachers and principals by helping to provide the best possible learning atmosphere and support, and we intend to continue to do that as best we can. This is to be, however, we must be provided the essential means to do what we do. We have repeatedly demonstrated in our community that we will step forward as directed by you and provided, and provide as much parental assistance and community support as you possibly can get, and to achieve superior results for our students. We plan to continue to work to do this as best we can. We have an analysis made before you, which indicates that Scripps Ranch and Marshall Middle School has the lowest... Thank you, thank you, Cheryl. Has the lowest dollar per student in spending ratio in the district. We accept the current downturn in the economy, will reduce our ability to help the school district, yet we will do what we can. We see some families also seeking alternative educational means which may affect the ADA in the future. In conclusion, we know all the problems that face you. We know the shortage of funds, and we applaud your open meetings such as this, seeking solutions for the best and most equitable distribution of our very limited funds for maximum teaching input. In this vein, we as a community are very mindful of the excellence of the record of achievement which our schools at all levels have achieved. We will try to equal or surpass these as we continue this, to accomplish this, however, we need a fair and equitable share of available funds, and we need our fair allocation of teaching and support positions. In conclusion, we recommend that you accomplish a further review and refinement of your proposed funding allocations to ensure that we are provided the funds and means to achieve the teaching goals of the district. We think your goals are proper, proper, we support them. With your help and with our efforts, we will, the students will achieve what they need, and that is the finest education that is possible to be given in America. And as I conclude this, I'd say, God bless America, and God bless all of our work for our students and our children, because it's very obvious, our country needs all the help. it can get. Without further ado, Bob Iko.
School Board, Bob Dingman and I, and our parent volunteers are here to represent our six public elementary schools, and the schools committee, which is made up of administrators, parent PTSA's, two planning groups, grad council, 12,000 homeowners, and about hundreds and hundreds of students that come from all parts of the district to our schools. So the eight of us here today represent a much larger group out there. We agree with the comments being made by other parents, and we don't necessarily want to repeat. But the charts and graphs that we gave you today aren't asking for an equalization of funds, but we are trying to illustrate that further budget cuts will have a greater impact on our schools. Over the last couple of years, schools in Scripps have continued to improve academically. About four years ago, we instituted the Scripps Competes Program to improve the attractiveness of our schools over private schools. This year, we have seen tangible results that parents are increasingly preferring our local public schools. But the inevitable budget cuts, there has been an immediate negative reversal of the gains that we have achieved. One of the questions that you may not hear today is, how could President Obama's stimulus package come to rescue the school district's budget for this year? And when could it come, and how could it be applied to save our schools, our teachers, and continue to do all the things that the school district needs to do, and not lose the parent support and the community support? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do any members of the board want to ask questions of the parents here? One thing, as you probably know, I have no children in the school. I have no grandchildren in the school, but I have three great-grandchildren that are coming along, and they'll soon be in your school district.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Dingman.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for giving me a little extra time.
Okay. Julie Greathouse, followed by Camille Harris, followed by Angela Bartolome, followed by Sarah Kroom.
Hello.
Hi.
Since 2001, I have been involved in the VAPA program as a site-embedded staff development person who trains first-grade teachers in how to deliver music education without me. This is designed to work artists in your programs out of your budget. And yet, our program is set for giant funding cuts. There's only two of us who work in first-grade music throughout your whole district, and you book me as booked as I can get. I book up in... By the end of August, I would normally have been booked all the way through June of the next year. And there's only two of us, and the other one took a half-year off last year for maternity. Providing more cuts in that program would be catastrophic. And the program that I'm involved in is designed to reduce your budget by not having music teachers everywhere involved. I can tell you that there is not a school that I have taught in, and I teach not only in your district, but I teach in National City, Lakeside, Lemon Grove, and South Bay Union. Not one school that I have ever been to, have I ever walked away from, without at least two teachers saying to me, "This has been such an incredible experience. My kids won't miss school the day you come. My kids will be there if they're sick, because they don't want to miss music. They don't want to miss Ms. Julie showing up in their classroom." And I can tell you with all honesty that it enriches my life so much to see the lightbulbs go on in those heads. Now, my program has been cut from its initial form of 30 weeks per year of in-classroom presentation of lessons, and then having the teachers teach them without me in a gradual release of responsibility program. Then it was 20 weeks. Then it was 12 weeks. This year, it's 10 weeks. How much more can you go before you remove the opportunity for children to experience this in their classroom, and an opportunity for staff enrichment for your teachers? And believe me, I walk into those schools, and I don't have a full set of cooperation from those teachers. They look at me, and they say, "Do you know what I have to do every day? Do you know what the district demands of me?" I don't want your program in my room, but by the time I leave, their minds have been totally changed. And I don't think I've ever had one school so far, in all the time that I've been doing this, that that hasn't been the case, because they see the improvement in their children's academic scores, in their reading, in their speaking, in their presence. They see the improvement in their attendance. And all I can say to you is that the reduction in categorical funds that helps to supply artists in the classroom is going to be catastrophic to the total effect that you want to have on your students. I brought some signs, and I'm going to hold them up, because I know my time is up, because I really want you to read it. It talks about the rates of attendance in schools with arts programs. 93% as opposed to 84.9. It also talks about the higher graduation. 90% higher graduate as opposed to 72.9% in those that have arts education. And finally, just John F. Kennedy. "The life of the arts, far from being an interruption, a distraction, in the life of the nation, is close to the center of a nation's purpose, and is a test to the quality of a nation's civilization." Please don't cut the arts.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Camille Harris, and I'm a native of San Diego, and I'm a district counselor at half-contract, working at three different sites for the inner-city schools. I'm here in support of my fellow counselors, and the teachers, and the administrators at my schools, and other schools here in San Diego. Point one I want to discuss is just the current conditions with the kids at the school and the teachers. The teachers are overworked, and as a counselor, I see where I can come in and support these students, and whether they're having behavioral, academic, or social problems, or familial issues. Point two, in response to these conditions, the teachers come to us and ask for assistance to support their students, to help them so they can succeed and take the tests that they are required in the elementary school level. We address the academic, the emotional, social, and students that have language issues, familial basic need, living conditions, single-parent families. And so I'm talking to parents, I'm talking to students, and I'm talking to teachers. Teachers come and sit in my office and talk to me and talk about their day, and ask for my help as a counselor. Point three, there's only so much that can be done in one day, and I'm at three sites. When I'm there, I address the needs, I devise a plan to assist the students, be it referral for resources or individual counseling, but I try and find what helps and works for each student, and the teacher, and the staff at the schools I'm at. Lastly, where do we go from here? You know, these child are our future. As a school counselor, I see each child can excel and be their best and reach their learning potential. I've worked with high school students as well, and I see what happens when it's not addressed in the primary school levels. I've worked with charter school kids, and they're in the schools, and they cannot read. They cannot read, they have come to school with low credits, and it's a real struggle. Their issues need to be addressed early on, which is in the primary school levels, the elementary school level. We are responsible for this. We cannot, should not, allow our young people to fail. Each child should be provided with the opportunity to go on to college. We need to address the issues in the primary grades. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Bartolome, followed by Sarah Kroom, followed by Heidi Delgado, and Heather Sebastian for you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry.
My name's Angela Bartolome, and I live in Del Cerro. I'm a parent of a kindergartner at Hurst Elementary. I'm going to be the first of several people here today that's going to be talking about the proposal with regards to starting, or changing, the school's start time from 7:50 tardy bell to 7:20 a.m. tardy bell. And my particular part in this is, I'm a working mom, and as a working parent, I'm actually going to be representing all the working parents at Hurst Elementary with regards to this. This is actually going to increase costs with regards to the after-school care program that we have at Hurst. That's the SAVE program. What that's going to incur is additional costs across the board for the year, and then also with the potential of an AM program. Right now, I don't think there is an AM program, but if school's going to start earlier, most likely that means that they'll have to open that up, and we'll have to pay for that as well. So I just hope that you guys will take that into consideration when you look at this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sandra Kroom, and first I want to apologize. I sent an email and said you were all the site council, and so I apologize for that. I have a letter here from a parent of a child that does get bus to our school, and he says, "As a father of a kindergartner, I am very troubled by the possibility that school may start 30 minutes earlier. Currently, I have to have my son in bed by 7:00 p.m. each weeknight just to make sure that he gets enough sleep and able to wake up in the morning. He has to get ready for school and catch the bus, which comes to pick him up at least an hour before the current ringing of the tardy bell. At times, if there are delays with the bus's arrival time, traffic, schedule, whatever, my son would have to, would not have time enough to eat breakfast at school. My son is my legacy, our future. Please do not change the start time. This will hinder our children's development and future. Of course, as a parent, I am willing to make any and all necessary sacrifices for my son's well-being, but we should exhaust all alternative options before deciding such a drastic change, which will directly hurt our children. Please vote against the changing of the school's start time." I've sent an email to the superintendent address and asking how changing the bell time to 7:20 saves us $1.2 million. I haven't received an answer, and, you know, I don't know if I deserve one. I think I do. Consolidation of bus schedules does make sense. You save money with that. What I don't understand is how starting school at 7:20 works into that and saves the $1.2 million. I don't know. We don't want it. It's hard on the kids right now, you know? 7:50, my son is an early-morning kid, and by Friday, he wakes up, and he's tired, and I tell him, "No, it's Friday, we get to sleep in tomorrow." And so now we're looking at, you know, I get him up right now between 6:30 and quarter to 7:00, and we're talking about getting him up between 6:00 and 6:15 in order to get him out of the house at 7:00 a.m., and I just don't see how that benefits him. And so just please think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kevin Delgado. I'm speaking for my wife, Heidi Feldman. I live at 5432 Siesta Drive in the college area, and I have a kindergartner at Hurst Elementary as well, and a preschooler who will be going there very soon. And I would like to reiterate, speaking against the earlier start times for all the reasons you've just heard. We're very concerned that our already sleepy child will be even more sleepy and more fatigued. We're concerned about families who are working, who are squeezed at both ends of the schedule. We're also a choice family. We choiced into going to Hurst, and so we have a slightly longer commute, and I'd like to speak to that. I know there are many... The Choice Program really serves a lot of families very, very well, but the extra commute times are really going to be pressed. A half-hour might not sound like much, but getting everyone to work into school on time through a longer commute is very, very difficult. We're concerned about the extra childcare time that we're going to need to see if we don't get off work any earlier, but our school is going to be letting out earlier. I'm also a professor of music at San Diego State University, and I'd like to reiterate all the wonderful things that were said this morning, speaking out in defense of the arts, not just as a utilitarian tool to improve test scores, but just sort of at the core of who we are as people and as citizens of this country. I guess I would be... I'm speaking out now as an individual. I've given you sort of lines in the sand for my family are against the early start times, against cutting the arts, against cutting counseling. So speaking as an individual now, where would I make the cuts? What would I suggest to you? I would really hate to see class sizes increase, but the one student proposal that I saw, if I had to swallow it temporarily, I could live with that. I would not wish higher medical co-pays on anyone, but the medical plan I have through the CSU, we wind up paying $10 to $15 per visit. I can certainly see a little room going up $5 on a co-pay, with all due apologies to people that that would affect. I would also suggest, if need be, cutting the more expensive extracurricular sports activities, things of that nature. Landscaping, I just don't want to see, I don't want to see teachers, counselors, the arts cut, and I would not like to see earlier start times. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Heather Shabastari. Is that almost close to right?
Hi, my name is Heather Shabastari, and I'm a parent of Hurst Elementary School. I grew up in Del Cerro. I went to Hurst. And I can tell you that I remember going to kindergarten, and we had rest time. We had nap time. And now, with the earlier start time of 7:20 in the morning, with a longer time in school than when I went, that we actually got to rest and feed our brains, that it's going to cause a lot of problems in the home as well as in the school. I live in Del Cerro. We have a horrible, horrible parking situation at Hurst. There's nowhere to park. So when you drive to Hurst, I live up the hill, it should take me a matter of five minutes to get my child to school, and it doesn't. You park far away, you get out of your car, and you walk, okay? So an earlier start time of 30 minutes, it's actually more like 45 minutes. Now, my kindergartner is not a morning person, as well as many other parents who could not get here today. I know by the end of the day, my son is extremely tired, extremely tired. Now, I don't know how the performance in the classroom will be with an earlier start time, but I can tell you that it probably would diminish, because most kids at 6:30 in the morning, when they would have to eat breakfast, don't eat. My five-year-old doesn't want to eat breakfast. I force him to eat one or two bites. Now, they do have snack time, but it's still that two, three-hour period in the morning when they're supposed to be listening to their teacher and learning, their brain is not thriving. I also note that on your website, your website, it states that there's mounting medical evidence that the amount of sleep, time of day, and the circadian rhythms play a part in how prepared students are in the classroom. I don't understand why our schools have to have an earlier start time because of the bus schedule.
Excuse me just a minute. Board members, please. There's ladies speaking to us, and there's two conversations going on up here.
We're trying to solve the problem, Harris. I apologize.
We understand that. We understand that, but please.
I also know that many students will probably be more tardy due to getting up earlier, parents trying to get the kids out of the house, the parking situation. Absences might go up. I know that the schools will lose money if that takes into effect as well. It just doesn't make sense. I know that my husband gets home from work around 6:00, 6:15 at night. There are many other parents that get home later. I know that I would have to get my son in bed between 7:15 and 7:30. Thank you.
Please continue. Please finish.
Also, we're having our time of day switched tonight at 12:01 a.m. Now, it's 7 o'clock at night. It's sunny outside. I don't know if your child would go to sleep when it's sunny outside, but mine won't. The sun is out. It's not nighttime. The sun doesn't go down until about 7:15, 7:20 around, just starting to go down once the time changes. We have to take that into consideration. I don't think all the parents want to go buy blackout shades for their children's rooms, because that's really what will have to happen. We don't go to bed at 7 o'clock at night. I don't think most of the kids will go to bed at 7 o'clock at night. It's just not normal, and we need about 10 to 12 hours of sleep per day, per child, to have their brains develop. Please take that into consideration. The 30 minutes, I know, doesn't sound like a lot, but it really, really is. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes our public testimony. Superintendent, would you like to go over the presentation of our numbers, and then open it to board member comments?
I always want to comment on the testimony.
No.
Thank you, President Jackson, and I apologize for my cold. I think that James has made me sick here. He says, he laughs, he says I made him sick for the last... He says, he laughs, he says I've made him sick for the last three weeks.
We don't do blame up here, okay? No blaming.
No blame game, John was saying why he's sick too.
I think it hasn't been the last three months.
Our staff and I would like to just quickly go back over the numbers that we shared with you during our last meeting. We provided you with an impact study of the categorical cuts that we placed. We'll tell you that, as we continue to try to work through these numbers, it's very frustrating for us, we know it's equally frustrating for you. Dr. Morris just came up here and told me a few minutes ago that we have yet received additional word from Sacramento that because of the lobbying efforts on behalf of some, that now the governor is saying that they are going to change their flexibility pattern, and versus giving us flexibility in all but 43 categories, now they're going to move that back up to 48. So, excuse me, 38, it's down to 38. So, we are, they've shrunk the flexibility pool, so we're scrambling around to see how much that has impacted us, and we don't think it will be much, but it will be some. So, we just, we just want you to know that we're working hard, I apologize when we come in, you've got a one number one week, the next time it may be a little different, but that's going to continue to happen until after the June revise, when we get that. So, I'm going to turn it over to James, he's going to walk us through this. We're going to answer any questions that you might have.
And can I ask the board members to write questions down until the presentation is done?
Yeah, can I ask also, somebody's got the air conditioning on, I don't think that we really need it today, somebody can turn that off.
Thought it was just me.
You think it's just?
Thank you very much.
Well, there's cold air somewhere.
Thank you, President Jackson. What we wanted to do is just touch base really quickly for 2008-9, and remind everyone the gap that we were trying to solve, which is listed on Slide 10 up on your screen, that shows 14.6 million, and then another additional 800,000, getting us to about 15.4 million dollars. Based on our last board meeting we had with you folks, and under your recommendations, you asked us to prepare essentially impact statements for each one of the items that we had listed on, did you move to Slide 11, Cheryl? Yeah, for each of the items that you had, we had listed on Slide 11. And you should have been, have received 10 additional pieces of information here, and they start off with the first balance of 2.5 million. And so, over the past several days, what we had done is worked with Chuck Morris, our deputy superintendent, to really sit down and work with the program managers and the people that manage the programs, so we could understand the full impacts of that. We also have Debbie Foster here today, and Debbie is our subject matter expert with categoricals, so I'm going to ask Chuck and Debbie to come on up, so we can walk through the slides that we have. And then Debbie, before you get started, can you please, let's just walk, come on up, and let's just walk through the formats as far as the column headings we've got. Cheryl, if you could move to the first one, that's called Art and Music Block Grant, we should have that in a PDF file. Right, and then Debbie, what I'd like you to do first is just walk us through the column headings, so everybody understands the 07-08 ending fund balance all the way to the right, okay? See if you can start with that.
Good morning. Starting out with the first page should be Arts and Music Block Grant, the one that we received this year, and it's scheduled to be ongoing. Column A reflects, as the board had requested, what the ending balances were last year, so we put that as a reference for you for 07-08. New funding, that's either anticipated, or we have confirmation that we'll be receiving. Before the reductions was the 1.9 in column B. We have an adjusted column there for you, and column C that incorporates the carryover and the new money. Then we've put the impact of, as we knew it last night, the 15.38, and as Dr. Grier mentioned, numbers are changing and information is changing, but based on last night, that's the information we had. We pulled information from the financial system on February 28th, that's reflected in column E. We do know that there's a lot of activity outside the system, schools still using categorical for hourly and other activities that may not have been posted yet, so those are the balances that were actually posted and incurred on that date. Column F would reflect, based on analysis of working with the program managers, what's truly unobligated as of today, and that column F would match the amount on the page 11 in your package.
Just let me give you just a quick point of reference. The one thing we've also been doing is, based on the spend, the freeze that you folks instituted for us, what we've been doing is getting actual spending plans from that date forward to the end, and so part of the work we've been doing the past several days is just matching that up, to make sure that they haven't spent more than we think they were going to, and to make sure that these numbers that you have on the page are legitimate numbers. Go ahead.
Then just as a reference, column G and H are what, are budgeted positions. For most of these programs, they don't have positions, but if there are positions referenced, the balance in column E and F reflect after every salary is taken into account, so those balances would not impact monthly personnel, which is the reason for that statement right below the numbers. Then we worked very closely with Mr. Morris and his staff about the program impacts, and that's reflected in use and impact.
So Debbie, let me just ask a clarifying question for us. So when I get to column G and H, and in the first slide we see one, so is that one FTE? Help me just help the board understand what that really means for us.
Okay, yes, that's just one FTE, that could be possibly two halftime people, but the total amount that's budgeted, actually one FTE, under the classified category.
Okay, thanks.
But again, these impacts would not affect those people in those positions.
And so again, maybe it would be helpful, as first as our staff sitting here and taking time and reading, because everyone can read, you've had this material, just to see if there's a question about this, because as you can see, the impact, no impact anticipated. So unless you have a question with this first one, we would like to just move on to the second.
I've got a question with this first one.
And if I can clarify again, I think for the board, if you look at column E that says budget balance?
Yes.
All of these have taken into account, and I'm going to repeat this, any salaries that have been encumbered for now in the rest of the year, so that no personnel is affected, wants to get to that.
Thank you. Mr. Morris? Yes, okay, I, when we say salaries in this particular, I just want the board to, because you're going to get hit with this later. When we say salaries, you mean salaries of any San Diego Unified personnel who are on our books as employees, do you not?
That's correct.
Okay, so we are talking about visiting artists, and this is not the visiting artists program? Let's see here, teacher training projects, VAPA instruction, we don't have any visiting artists, teaching artists projects?
So if we do have a contract with that individual and it's encumbered, it would already be taken out of this amount? If it's not in a contract form and encumbered, it would still be an expense that we would still pay if we.
So there, for example, I believe there's an artist from the zoo who goes out and visits the schools, there's artists throughout this community, who you, who are paid with these funds.
And if they're under contract for the rest of this year, then that's been taken into account.
Okay, because I can tell you that that's an important source of income for the artist community, particularly as the economy falters, but, you know, people are going to be losing income from this. Okay.
Okay, I have a question, and just clarification here. At the top of this, where it says resource name, it says ongoing, but in the use, it says a one-time allocation. So I guess my question would be that even though we might take funds from this this year, next year they would be receiving some funds, even though it would be having a reduction because of the deficit.
Actually, what we did on all of these is, we have been given permission to use the 07-08 in balances to balance our budgets. So if, that's the reason these particular funds are being used, because they did have some balances.
I understand that my question is.
But that's, actually the question is this, that, is that while these are ongoing block grant dollars, we can use the year-end fund balance to balance the budget mid-year, then this account next year will get less money, it will be cut by 20%.
Right.
So, so that, we can sweep up any of the funds in this account that are, have not, that doesn't go for salaries, that have not been encumbered, that were just there, and you can see, for example, last year, we had a carryover $3,600 that were not spent. So, that's been traditional. The key is next year, you won't have, it's a double hit next year. You won't have the carryover, because you're spending it to balance the budget.
Okay.
And it's going to take a 20% hit from the state.
Okay, so I'm asking that question, so when I look at column B, if I was to want to think about how much we would receive for the 9, 10 budget, it would be 20% less than the amount in column B. Is that a fair statement?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not saying, because at the bottom here, it says that it means a reduction carryover, which is okay, but with negative, but the bottom line is that we still would receive some funding next year. Now, on the next page, and I know we just do it one time, it just says, at the top it says one time. So that means that it's not.
That was a one-time block grant, there will be no additional funding for that.
Okay, and I just want to make sure that we're clarifying that, and that some of these cases, it's not ongoing. The ones that are ongoing, I think we should, you know, for me to help, meaning the future, understand that we would put a decrease of 20% of the amount in column B, to help us plan for next year.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Barrera, then Dr. Evans.
Yeah, so I'm trying to understand how the, how we're implementing the freeze. I mean, I think the direction from the board was to freeze spending, and then spending, you know, that a school would argue it needs to make would have to be approved basically by the superintendent, correct? That's the, that's what we're living under. Okay, so in understanding that, the column E budget balances at the end of February, and then column F, adjusted available balance, how is it that, that, that the balance went down, you know, by that amount between the end of February and now?
We, working with the program manager or the principals, knowing that they already had obligations that were outstanding, we took into consideration any of those items.
And I think it's important.
Those are things that were already committed to, contracts already signed, people already doing the work. And quite frankly, as, just you ask, so basically what happens is you go in, and if a principal has spent money but hasn't posted, and it hasn't come in, we had to go in and say, "Get caught back up." And that's another thing that we're working on, is as you encumber money, we have to have a different system where, as you encumber at the school, it shows up on your accounts here.
Okay, so just in terms of the timing of these conversations with the school sites, am I understanding correctly that what you've done is you've gone to each individual school site, you know, in each of these funding sources, and said, "How much are you going to need to spend between now and the end of the year?" That's the conversation that's been occurring?
Well, what we actually did is, we instituted the spending freeze.
Yeah.
And then let me just talk a little bit about the lag of information, and so it takes us about 14 days in the new month to essentially kind of do a soft close on the books. That's when we catch everything up. So what you're seeing here, and part of this adjusted balance, would be encumbered items that we've gone back to schools and or programs, that are legitimately encumbered, that could be a contract, could be an ICA, those kinds of things. And so what we've done is gone back to schools and program managers to say, "What in your encumbrances can we legally eliminate?" Because there's just some things that we're legally obligated to do. And then in conjunction with that, there's a little bit of a timing issue, which is normal in finance, to essentially have some, the actions that we do in the previous month, we normally catch up to them, reconcile them in the next month. Takes us about 14, 12, 14, 15 days to do that here at the district. So, with those two pieces in mind, what we've also done is, when we went out and said, "We're going to institute the spending freeze," we knew there were specific things that you couldn't stop spending. I'm sure you folks got a lot of emails saying, you know, "I have copy paper, I have bus, you know, school bus trips to take," those kinds of things. So in working with the school principals, and the budget analysts, and the budget team, what we tried to do is say, "All right, in the freeze that we have in place, what are the items that you have to do to carry on business?" And so the things that we're going to keep doing is, you're going to have to keep student safety, health, materials, paper, janitorial supplies, those kinds of things. So we've actually sat down with almost every principal so far, and looked at their spending items that they have, and if they had anything unrestricted, we pretty much said, "Well, we're going to eliminate that based on the spending freeze." So we walked through each area of funding that they had at each school site, and have, based on our spending freeze criteria, have said, "You can keep spending that, no, you can't spend that." That's been a lot of work, and it's probably still a little bit ongoing of some reconciliation right now. So that's how we've been managing that. Every day, we sit down with the principal, have a phone call, send an email back and forth, talking about what they plan to spend and what they don't. And then what Terry has done is, he has given the authority to myself and Chuck to approve those items. So Terry and I, Chuck and I, on a two-times-per-week basis, we go through literally each one of those forms, and we either approve or disprove, and then we send it back to the school chief improvement officer, to say, "This has been approved, and here's why." It fit under health, it fit under emergency, it fitted under materials, or we don't approve it, and here are the reasons why we don't approve it.
Another real quick thing, and I know that you know this, you look at $1,700 on the next page, and you go back up here, excuse me, and you've got $2,500. Just as a reminder, when you look at over 186 schools, you're literally talking $50 here and $100 there. What you're talking about doing is sweeping these accounts, and there's not a lot of money left at each one of these school sites. It's not like we're going in and taking $5,000 away from a school, or $2,000 away from a school. This is after we have swept up accounts, and when you guys ask us to go back and look at this, we didn't mind doing it, but I wanted you to know, when you look at this, it's a little bit at this school and a little bit at that school, and you know that, but we are trying to, at the same time, be as frugal as we know how. What we've also seen is, since the board has put this freeze in, we have had a flurry from principals of coming in and saying, "Well, we've got to have this, we've got to have this, we've got to have this." And as Chuck and James have said, if it's something that's legitimate, because you said to us.
Right.
If it impacts teaching and learning, okay.
Right.
If it doesn't.
So that's, that's really what I'm trying to get at, and it's going to be with all of these, these categories. I guess the question is, have we completed the process of, you know, having the conversation with each school, where, you know, they're identifying, "Look, we have to spend," and it's part of what, you know, Mr. DeBeck was talking about last week, schools that had sort of, you know, planned out spending over the course of the year that haven't spent it yet. So are we, are we done with the conversations, I guess is the question, where schools can say, "I understand the spending freeze, but we had in our game plan that we were going to spend X dollars in April on something that does impact, you know, you know, student learning." Are those conversations over now? Or is there still, you know, so in other words, if we approve, you know, sort of sweeping this 2.5 from this and all the rest?
Yes.
Okay, so that's my question.
Yeah, so when you look at the 10 slides that we have, one of the first things we did is, we make sure we collected all the different spending request forms that they gave us to find out, to ensure that we could take the dollars that we have listed here. So I'm, I'm looking at the Art and Music and PE one time, the 1.7. We confirm that based on school site conversations, that we can take those dollars, that it's not in their current spend.
And I'm not just talking about that we can legally take the dollars, but the sort, yeah, right, the conversation, yeah, but.
No, no, I'm not talking about the legality, I'm talking about operationally.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We ended up extending the timeframe just a little bit for them, because we'd never asked them to do this before.
Yeah.
So it was a lot of work on their part to get this all accomplished.
Okay.
And I'm talking mainly the principals of the school sites.
Okay.
Dr. Evans?
Okay, my comments were very much in line with what Mr. Barrera said, so I just want to make sure, because when we're looking at a, the 2.5 million dollar cut, we want to know, you know, what is the impact? And from what I understand, things ongoing, things that were planned are already covered, and so when it lists things down here, like instructional materials supplies and so forth, it would mean, one impact would mean, if I suppose, if a teacher in April came up with an idea of buying some new music or doing something like that, that those new things would, even though they might be good, would not be able to be added on.
That's right.
So that would be one impact in terms of, not that things would be cut off that were already planned, but new things couldn't be added on. And then the other reality is, we just have to be aware that we're really cutting to the bone, and we're not going to be able to do this again, because we've cut out the carryover for next year, and we have less next year, so that's just another reality, but it is a way to get. But it is a way to get us through the year by keeping the ongoing programs going and not eliminating the people who are working on them. That's correct?
That's correct, yes, sir. That's correct.
Marry, any more comments or questions?
Yeah, well, I still reserve, you know, questions about, what's interesting to me, and I guess what's making me suspicious, is that what you've got on your hard copy piece of paper, says this was a one-time allocation to the district, of which the 1.6 million dollar balance remaining is at the school sites. The purpose of the grant is support funding for VAPA-related instructional material supplies, musical instruments, professional development, et cetera, which sounds pretty bloodless. And then, but the one I've got up here on this, says, "The art and music block grant is an ongoing grant that funds the teaching artist project, training classroom teachers to provide VAPA instruction at the elementary grades, the grade-level arts experience project for all grade two through eight students, giving the opportunities to attend performances and exhibits at the local arts venues and content area, textbooks and supplies, musical instruments and used materials." That doesn't sound like anything that I really want to cut, you know. So, well, it's not me, it's whoever wrote this, thank you for this. This is, it really reminds me of when I worked at an environmental impact, and there was a thing for San Onofre plant, and this young guy wrote it, and it, all the animals that were going to be killed by what they were doing, and then his boss came in and cleaned it up, and it sounded a lot less damaging. So, you know, I mean, this is-
Board needs to know.
Can I just comment really quickly on that? And certainly, I think it has been stated that the amount that we're taking is not going to change anything that has already been planned for this school year. They have gone back time and time again to confirm what the spending for this school year is, and that is okay. The amount that is being taken is the amount that was not allocated, didn't have any encumbrance as of the 28th of February. So, and I think Dr. Evans' point was absolutely, you know, correct, that if someone comes now to a school site or to the VAPA office and say, "Can I come and do this particular program for your district this year?" The answer is no. Whereas in the past, they might have come, you know, around March or April, or Mother State to do something special, we could have said yes. So I think that that is, that is what is happening. So we're not cutting anything that has already been planned, what we're saying is that we won't spend any more money. The other part of that, that I think that we under, well, but that is exactly what this is saying, because the difference, and I point again out to the difference between column E and column F. And when the question was, "Why is that such a huge difference?", that is because we have protected the arts programs for the rest of the year. We just can't add any more to it. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, what, the encumbered items, those things under contract are not being cut. Now, I will say to you, a principal may have made something verbally to somebody to take place in April that we are not aware of, but anything that we're-
Well, for example, yeah, for example, there are, you know, kids go to see the symphony. You don't pay for those tickets, you know, six months in advance. And, you know, or kids are going to, you know, go see a program.
But by the same time- Whatever we know about is-
But by the same time, if that principal would have said to James or Chuck, or to me, that "We're going to the symphony in April, and we need to do, we need X amount of dollars to do that," we said, "Fine, that's in keeping with what you have directed us to do." Now, again, this is very frustrating work for us, I know it's equally frustrating to you. We've got to balance this budget at the end, the middle of this year, and we have said to everyone, we have worked hard to keep this away from our children, we continue to work hard. But for anyone in this community to think that we cut $53 million out of this budget at the beginning of the school year, now another 46 in mid-year, and probably over 140 for the next school year, these are painful cuts. And we're going to work just as hard as we can, but we have spent an inordinate amount of time this week doing what you asked us to do, meeting with principals individually. Now, if somebody has come up, and they have, for whatever reason, forgotten to forecast, and they have traditionally gone to the symphony, and they, "Oh, I forgot," that's a whole different story. I mean, they have been given every opportunity. And what we've said to principals is, "We're not just asking you, go ask your leadership team in your school, talk to your teachers. We need to know what you've encumbered and what you've got planned." And if it fell within the guidelines, which you were very clear about, and you said you did not want this to impact kids' education, I promise you, we're passionate about this stuff as you are. But if there's money available that has not been encumbered, and look at the carryover that we've had for every year. I mean, last year, there was a $6 million fund balance. And I would ask the same question you might ask about, "That's why." But it is what it is. And so we're looking at, right now, at the end of the day, you would have had a $1.7 million fund balance. But that's that 1.7, so if people have had an opportunity to stand up and call for those funds, and if for whatever reason they haven't, then quite frankly, that's on them.
And I wish you one thing, just in this time of year, by this time of the year, we've already planned all of our field trips, and they might not have gone home to the parents, but on our school-wide calendar, it has been planned, and we have noted that, and allocations are usually, and the staff knows, and I'm sure the principal knows, of any symphony or any of the field trips that have been planned that would encumber the district.
I'll leave it alone after this, but I think a telltale for the board is, is that you go through each one of these, and you look at the funding balance in last year, and then you look at this year. There's a few of them that is different. But most of them, you will see, the year in that we are sweeping now is significantly less than what you had a year ago.
I just want the board to understand what it is that they're cutting. It was very striking to me, frankly, that this, as I said, is so bloodless, and this sounds like something I don't want to cut. And I appreciate knowing what it is I'm putting on the table. I would rather know fully, because it's, and this is the very first thing, Dr. Greer. As you know, you know, my family's in the arts community, and, you know, at many different levels. So for me, this is what resonates. Although I do want to tell that music teacher out there, that kids that need athletics, they need it like oxygen too. So it is, it's, this is difficult, but this is just the first thing. And, you know, there are going to be other things that I care about that are on here. So, but there are going to be other things that I don't, you know, care so terribly much about. And it's, I would have been remiss not to bring it to my fellow board members' attention.
We thank you for bringing it to our attention. Board members, any other comments? Superintendent and staff, do you have anything else that you want to share with this?
No, ma'am.
Also, I want to say, I do appreciate staff work, because I know you've worked hard on this.
Well, I think from a staff standpoint, I appreciate it too, because I think we've said to you, we're going to work hard to be transparent. And so I think that you, and we, and the whole staff, and the other piece of that is not just being transparent, but this is whole, it's this entire idea of, "Let's try to work together as we go through this." And so reaching out to people to get their feedback and impact on this, I think, was important as well.
So it is my understanding that you're looking for the board today to make a motion and approve the additional category flexibility solutions found on page 11.
Are we going to go through each of these?
Each one of those?
Well, that was his question, his question, his-
A question, was there any other questions?
Yeah. This didn't. On any of them, he was saying that we received these items to review, and we have reviewed them. If we have any questions on any of them, please ask it of the staff now. And then my question to the staff currently is, today's goal, what is it that you would like-
Today's goal is, we would like you to approve this and to approve our mid-year plan, so that we can-
And this would solve our mid-year plan, the $46 million problem.
Page 11?
Yeah, that's correct. So we'd ask that you would approve that, so we can essentially close out the 2008, 2008, 2009 year, and concentrate on the 2009-'10 fiscal year coming up.
Okay, so I just want to reiterate to the board members, what the staff is asking us, looking at the items that they have forwarded to us in discussions at the previous board meeting and this board meeting, that we approve the items that are listed on page 10 and on page 11 to close out the '08-'09 budget.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
I just want to clarify that. Barrera?
I'm sorry. Did you want to go first?
Well, I notice on this, the only one that's got a higher ending balance is the, in this year, is the GATE, which has, everybody else's, the left-hand column is higher than the right-hand column.
That's right. Chuck, do you want to comment on that?
In terms of, we basically looked at what the ending balance was last year, based on what was still available, and that was the figure that we said that would be available for this.
But for every other one on this list, they're actually, their ending balance this year is higher, which would indicate to me that they haven't spent as much, they haven't spent the funds that they-
They, traditionally, they haven't sent the discretionary funds like they have in other places. That's the reason you've seen traditionally that kind of a fund balance and carryover every year. And this is discretionary with the schools. This does not have anything to do with the personnel.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? Dr. Evans?
Okay, I'll try to go through these very quickly. So I assume on the next one, arts, music, and PE, there's a big gap between the four and, on the next page, there's a big gap between the four and a half million and the 1.7 million. And I'm assuming that, and it's a one-time fund, that those had already been encumbered and planned, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then on the next one, which is pure assistance and review, in terms of understanding this, I know there's a, you know, a $500,000 adjusted balance. But when I see words under the use, "The mandatory component of the program provides assistance to permanent classroom teachers and so forth," and that the support is currently provided by four full-time consulting teachers. So based on what you've said, this doesn't affect personnel, those four consulting teachers.
Actually, in this one, we will be able to complete everything we're supposed to do for the rest of this year, based on what's required of us under law, because of the fund balance that was currently there in our current-
Oh, so we started with 600, and we were supposed to end up with 500, and we could take that down to zero.
That's correct. But we will be able to complete everything we're supposed to do under the law.
Right. So once again, we're doing away with the cushion.
That's correct.
Okay. And then on the discretionary block grant, that comes out pretty equally between E and F. And again, same issue in terms of having been encumbered. Let me just go through quickly, because there's a couple others. Same thing with the GATE. I'm wondering on the-
Can I just mention, the slide you have for GATE is incorrect. The document that I have shows an actually ending fund balance for '07 to '08 of 767. So I wanted to point that out, which would put us in line, which then answers the question that was asked about the fund balance.
So the balance at the beginning and the end is about the same?
It's about the same.
And we'd be clearing that out. And then on the next one, which is instructional gardens, it's relatively speaking, a smaller amount. We're talking here about 30 schools have implemented a school garden program, which certainly seems really great from a lot of points of view of science, knowledge, environmental, and so forth. So by, are all these plants going to die?
Well, I have to be frank with you, some of them haven't been planted yet. And, you know, I have to say to you, to show you some of the flexibility, yesterday, we received a memo from a school that said, "We're having our planting day today, we've obligated these funds." So we have found other ways to try to take care of that, since that would already taken care of. I mean-
And not only that, I will say, and I surely hate to lose money in this category, because even this morning, as we speak, people are out volunteering and donating to continue some of the gardens and out and around the Gompers community. And I thank them for doing that. And even though this is a small amount, as far as our budget is concerned, you know, everyone has been, you know, concerned about losing any funding to help our garden program, especially in this particular time, when we're going to, urban gardens is the thing that's really taking off in our country right now. But I think that, given our economic crisis right now, we'll make that sacrifice. But I want to thank the communities that are stepping up to fill in, for doing that.
And what we'll say again to the board is, had we had principals that stepped up to us and said, "We need this money to buy seeds for plants," we would have released it. I mean, this is not something, none of these are, I mean, we've tried to toe the line, because we just have, but we've been very reasonable with requests, simply because we also support this, and we got clear, you were very clear in your direction to us.
So on this, it's not necessarily that these 30 school gardens are going to be eliminated. So, and I guess, you know, if there were more details, you're saying nobody has requested, said, made a special request?
What we said, Dr. Evans, is, up until yesterday, no one had. Yesterday, we came in with about a-
About $2,100.
$2,100 request from a school to help-
That had already been spent.
With the gardens. Well, we'd already frozen this, we prepared this, and so we tried to find some discretionary money to say, "Okay, go ahead and do that, and we'll cover that." The problem is, there's just not a lot of discretionary money to find.
And I want to assure the board, and I know Dr. Greer has directed us to do this, the numbers are still coming in from the state. What we will do in all cases where there is a major need for a school, we will make every attempt to go in and find how we can do that for emergency purposes, and for those things that have already been done. So it's not the end that, well, this, you know, we're going to make every attempt to work with our schools, because schools are where it's happening. That's our goal.
Well, on this one particular one, again, it's relatively a smaller amount, but it's very important. And it's a one-time grant. And in terms of the message that we're sending to the community, one of the things we might even consider is even setting aside a percentage of this, instead of the full, cutting the whole 150, having some-
Yeah, and just, we don't actually have the number for what was the size of the, I mean, we don't have the adjusted budget in our slide. Was the total grant $159,000?
That's-
Yeah, it's kind of strange.
That was carryover from a prior year.
So do we know how much the-
So we don't have anything on the comms?
Do we know how much the grant was originally, Debbie?
It was approximately $300,000.
So they started out the year with $300,000, spent 150?
No, last year, at the beginning of the-
See, the point is with this, Dr. Evans, this, it started out with approximately a $300,000 grant. It looks as if they spent about half of it. And then at the end, the grant went away. And that was a one-time grant, and they hadn't spent 159,000. So it's been there all year. And they haven't spent any of it. And so then the kicker is, it's sitting there, they haven't spent it, the grant ended last year, the original grant was 300,000, they only spent 141 of it. So the 159 was sitting here, and no one asked for it until yesterday, we got a request for about $2,100.
Okay, and it's not an ongoing thing?
No, sir.
It was a one-time thing. So quickly, on the next item, which is the Nell Soto Parent Involvement, which is 355,000, and the concern here is that, in terms of affecting education, this is dealing with at-risk students, home visits. Again, there's just only one figure, so I don't know what there was, and what was spent, and what's left over, but, you know, just wondering if this means that we're going to stop for the rest of the year, working with these at-risk students, and then we're going to have more dropout?
This grant actually was a carryover as well, and the grant expired in January, and we've asked, we had asked for an extension. Schools were having a hard time spending these dollars. So we do have an impact statement there, but that's a carryover from a prior year, and it was approximately $700,000 to start with.
Schools were having a hard time spending money?
Well, you got, Dr. Evans, you got to remember, kind of like we talked about our problem from a general fund and a capital fund, there are very stringent and strict limitations that a lot of our grants apply toward us. So there's very specific things that essentially we can spend the dollars on. So I could see that it would be difficult in some grants to actually use the dollars.
So this is not stopping anything that's already ongoing or planned, like we said on the other things?
And if it was, we would have deducted that out of this, and what you would have seen is half of this, or even more, had that been requested.
Okay.
Because I can promise you, as little as- Because I can promise you, as little as, as it sounds, getting back to the gardening, we very, I wish every elementary school in our district had its own garden.
Yes.
I really do.
I do, too.
And, and so that, along with parent visiting, as I said before, we share your concern and passion about these things, and, and we've gone back and asked two times, you know, what's, what's going on with this?
Okay, and one final question. In terms of things that are not on all of this list, if we were to come up with other things, and I'll just use an example, I'm not proposing at this point, for example, if we were charging parents fees or something, if something came up between now and the end of the year where we were able to either make a cut in this year, or get more revenue in this year, could that be then, we, we could already have balanced the 2008, '09 budget, but we could count that towards our 2009, 2010 budget, correct? If we find additional savings mid-year?
I think the kicker is, and you're going to see this later, next week, when we talk about next year's deficit, and when you, when you see what we're talking about, and I don't want to belittle $50,000 here, $100,000 there, you could, you could save $100,000, or $200,000, or you could save $500,000 in fees, and I can promise you, that will be a proverbial drop in that bucket, and, and you will see that. So we, we will continue to try to scrub and find ways, because, you know, $5 here and $5 there certainly adds up. We don't want to, to...
Right. And I just want to, I want to be clear, as we're going through during the rest of the year, that accounting-wise or whatever, that that's how it would work. If we find another way to save a million dollars...
Right.
In this school year, or raise a million dollars, that we then have another million towards next year's deficit.
Yeah, and what that could do is, that could be added to our ending balance, which then, when you get into the new fiscal year, it'll be part of the beginning balance.
Good, okay.
Mr. Gray?
So just a couple things. So what we're doing right now is, we're, we're sweeping to, in order to, you know, balance our budget for this year, money that otherwise would have been carried over until next year.
That's correct.
That's basically what we're doing, right?
That's correct.
Right. So the impact of the loss of these funds that are being carried over, is that going to be somewhat mitigated by the fact that next year, our plan is to fully fund the school budgets?
Almost, almost all of these, except for several, do not actually involve personnel. So it will be affect in terms of money that they might have for materials or supplies, but in terms of personnel, the answer's, except in a few, couple of these areas, that there will be no effect in terms of personnel. So fully funding the budget...
That's right.
Will do that.
What the, what the, what the negative impact's going to be is that, in years past, the school district has began the budget cycle with what they, I guess, called a, a beginning budget balance, for carryover from the previous year, like these dollars. And so you might start out the year with $50 million or more of carryover. Now, all of a sudden, you're spending that money to balance this year's budget, so you're not going to have that money to carry over, which will, which widens that gap for next year. We, in the past, as a district, have done this for, for, for many years, and just what's happened to us is, when the state comes in and cuts us by 20%, two things happen. Number one, you are not going to have the amount of carryover you had because you've got to balance this year's budget, and then on top of that, you've got a 20% cut in categoricals for the next year.
Yeah, I guess my question, and I'm not trying to at all, you know, minimize that this is going to have real impact, but my, my understanding of part of the problem from the district underfunding school budgets every year is that it results in school-side councils basically needing to, you know, make cuts in supplies.
You're right.
You know, and others. So, so I mean, I guess that's the question, and, and the fact that we are, you know, intending to fully fund school sites next year...
I think I understand your question, and so I think that there is going to be a direct relationship in, in terms of what you're talking about, because if we fully fund the school sites, then they're not going to have to go back and make cuts...
Yeah.
Particularly out of areas where they've had a 20% reduction.
Yes.
Which there's nothing there to cut.
Yes, yes, yes.
Good point, very good point.
The second, the second point, and this came up, I had a great meeting last night with a group of parents at Sherman Elementary, and, and they were, you know, it just, the, sort of the spirit of trying to, you know, that we're all in this together, you know, trying to, trying to figure this out, was, was really, I mean, it was just, it was, it was great to experience. One idea that they had, and I don't know whether we started to look at this or not, is doing an inventory of each school to figure out, are there supplies, materials, that a school has that it just probably is not going to use next year? And, and, and then looking at schools that need additional, you know, supplies and materials, and basically sharing, so I'm not talking about money, I'm talking about, you know, physical supplies and materials that schools already have, that if one school says, "Hey, I've got more than I need of whatever it is," we can actually sort of put that back into the pot and share that with schools who are going to have less than they need next year.
And to answer your question, two weeks ago, we put in place that the end of the year, we would actually be doing an inventory of every school.
Yeah.
Part of, just as an example, textbooks, we don't know where textbooks are located in the district.
Right.
We're going to know that, so that next year, we're not buying textbooks that we don't need when they're sitting here, and a school over here needs them. So that process is already started, and, and that inventory will be taken.
Yeah, we're also taking another look at something that I know some of the board members have been asking questions about, is summer school. And our summer school programs in, that we're running right now are being fully reimbursed by the state. But here, here's something that we've not given a lot of thought to strategically, we started looking at it yesterday. We have thousands, I mean, thousands of students in this school district that are one to two years older than their peer group. So I'm not, while I'm not advocating social promotion, what I am saying is, if you had meaningful summer programs that may cost you a little on the front end in the summer, it's going to save you millions of dollars, because think about, most of our kids, it's not taking 13 years to educate the ones that stay in.
Yeah.
It's taking 14 and 15 years to educate them. And so when you add the cost to educate a child for another year, or two more years, in a budget the size of ours, it's astronomical. And so we have started to take a look at that, and we're talking with Darrell about what we could do perhaps using technology, maybe not now, but in the future. That's got to become a more important strategy for us as we look to try to get our budget under control.
Okay, thank you. We'll carry it 9:10 discussion, 9:10. Ms. Nakamura?
Yeah, so as we, we are sweeping these budgets, but as far as the budget is concerned that we get from the state next year, absent any decisions we may make later in the day, these are going to be, you know, restored. We get X amount of money from, or is this just cutting this forever?
No, what's going on with this is, some of these are grants, and some of these, some of these have already expired.
Okay.
We just talked about two that are gone.
All right, okay, we did, we did, yeah.
So those are gone for...
Period.
Period.
All right.
Others that happen to be categorical in nature, the monies will come back next year, but they will come back at 20% less than what they started this year. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. But I would also like to remind the board that when we were talking about, you know, doing, you know, making our campaign up in the state legislature, I said that we should, as far, if we were asking for flexibility, that we should ask for, you know, that, that we were going to identify programs that we didn't want flexibility, because the pressure was going to be on us to cut those programs. And as long as there wasn't any flexibility in that, we wouldn't have that pressure in order to cut those programs. Rob powder, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul. And this board to a person said, you know, because I mentioned arts and music, and I mentioned the gate program, and this board to a person said, "Oh, we would never cut arts and music, and we would never cut gate. When it comes down to it, we will protect those things." Well, we're not. This is it. We're cutting arts and music, we're cutting gate, we're cutting English lan, you know, language acquisition, we're cutting all the things we said we weren't going to cut. So I'm putting that out there. We're not protecting them.
Dr. Evans?
Yeah, I just want to follow up with the comment about summer school, because, and I know we're going to discuss the next year later, but first of all, the summer school, this summer, comes out of the 2008, '09, or the 2009, '10 budget?
Depends on which part of it's in June, and which part of it's in July.
Oh, okay. So it's by the, it's actually by the fiscal year?
Yeah, our fiscal, our fiscal year goes July 1 through June 3 of, of the next calendar year.
Okay, and some of the summer school is obviously during, during the month of June. And so I know, and I don't have it right here out of my 3,000 emails, but there, you gave me the information on the summer school costs, not the most recent one, but one from someone who was in charge of summer school, and there was a figure like $6 million on one part of it, with which $4 million was reimbursed, $11 million, $6 million was reimbursed. So I guess my question is, is could summer school basically be run with the amount that is reimbursed by the state only, and, and is there a possibility of using some Title I funds to supplement that without going into general fund?
Actually, yeah, that's what we're planning for this year, but Chuck, Chuck will speak to that.
Actually, we're, we're putting options together for summer school now, trying to get legal opinions, because one of the things that we want to do is, once we get our Title I money, the new stimulus money, is to be able to use Title I funding along with our reimbursements, to be able to provide summer school basically at no additional dollars out of our general fund. And so we're putting together several different scenarios. It's right now still in the planning stage, but we're, we're getting closer, and, and we're seeking some legal opinions about how we can do this to make them mesh together.
And are you also looking at technology in terms of reducing the cost of summer school?
Very much so. I've, I've asked Darrell to, to do a, so that you know, a technology plan that puts, that takes technology into every classroom at the elementary level and at the middle schools in terms of what that cost would be.
Can I get a, a motion for these items, please? Yes, will you speak?
Are we talking about these?
Yes.
Categorical? Yes. Categorical, we'll do that. Okay, yeah, I...
Mike?
All right, well, you know, when you, my first statement about this is that I want to know whether or not we're planning to borrow the money from these accounts or steal it.
Steal?
It's like, it's like, I've got a, a family budget in it, I also have some money for my college education, but yeah, I got to pay my mortgage, so it's pretty important because the family won't have a place to live, what gives my college education for my kids? So I borrowed the money from the account, and do I intend to pay it back, or I just going to eat it? You know, the kids have been doing whatever they did to put the money in the account, and I need it, so I grab it. Okay? Well, it seems to me like we have a moral obligation to decide that if we steal this money, that we're going to say, "We're sorry" first, and then, or we're not going to steal it, and we're going to let them have a first chance at getting it back when the money comes in that's in this category. And I'll use an example, the one I was talking, talking about, it's more than one in here, but the arts and music block grant. Okay, so there's, I happen to have been contacted from schools in my area, and they said, "Yeah, yeah, well, sure, we haven't spent all this money. We, we have a reason, because we've been accumulating it for the last few years to try to get enough money together to put a band into our school." Okay? Now, we could have bought a whole bunch of piccolos, and a half a dozen clarinets, and a couple of bass drums, but we don't know exactly how many we need until we set up a program. So, you know, if you force us to spend the money, we'll go out, you know, it's too late now, because you're going to steal it from us, but if you force us to spend the money, if you set up a policy that every time you get a categorical grant, you're going to steal it if you need the money, then we're going to start buying piccolos. And if we have to trade them for violins, we'll do it. And it's a waste of money, but that's your fault, because you forced us to spend the money. Okay? Now, and I, last time I used the grasshopper and the ant story, I didn't finish the story, but everybody knows it, I hope. And so then, the issue is, these people that are the ants that actually think ahead are penalized because we didn't think ahead. You know? And so, you know, when it comes to this tier three for the arts and music block grant, I'll never vote for any one of these motions unless it says, "We're borrowing and we plan to pay it back." It's not just a simple budget solution, it's a moral question. Okay? Now, we go to the second page, I'm doing these page by page. The second one is arts and music and PE one time. Okay? I say the same thing. People may want to get some athletic equipment, they may want to do some stuff, they may have had some long-range plans. Somebody could say, "Oh, yeah, well, this wasn't Spanish, should have been Spanish." Well, you know what? You tell that to ants. You know, they should have ate all the food so they, till the winter, they all starved. I'm sorry, that's not going to work for me. If I've got people that are better thinkers than we are, out there in the schools anticipating problems and trying to figure out how to run their business, why should I say, "Because we can't run our business," that we're going to take away their money? No, I'll vote for it if it's a borrow, and it's a moral obligation to pay it back as soon as we get money in this category. Now we get to the next question. That's the first part, because if there's a motion to just do it, I'm going to go, "No, I'll just tell you that, and I'll be the minority, but I still believe I got a moral standing in what I'm saying." The next piece is, these are categorical funds. They're not supposed to be used to solve general fund problems. If I get money from the state for arts and music, I can't use it for something else, because the money came to us for a reason. It's, you know, they, they could say flexibility, but flexibility, you know, will they give us another grant if every time we send it down here, we steal it? I wouldn't. I, you know, I think, you know, a lot of people send money to places expecting they'll be matching money, people using, you know, other kinds of support for it, and when there's evidence that every time they send it down to us, we choose, we choose to grab it and use it for solve general fund problems, I think, I'd be reluctant to send us the money, frankly. So I think we're in a moral bind here about trying to figure out what to do about categoricals, sweep the categoricals, take away counseling money because the counselors don't need it because they didn't spend it already? Well, I'm sorry, but you know, thinking ahead is not a bad thing. So if you're talking about these, this, this exhibit, okay. Now we'll go to, back to the John and the summer school. When we ask a question in this about, around about a budget, and John asked a question, maybe it wasn't as focused as staff would like it, they answered his question, but they didn't answer anything we could use, because here we get the answer of, "How much does it cost for summer school?" Well, we get reimbursed $2.97 per hour, per kid. Is that worth $10 million? This whole report, the thing here, I read through it, and I couldn't find the dollar amount for either year. Okay? So then, let's say that I, there's a, I already made it up on my amount, and so far, nobody's refuted it. I've always been pretty close and asked guys in the budget how close I am. Okay? And I said, "10 million dollars for summer school," and I didn't say which fund it came from, but if you cut summer school, no matter which year it is, this year, you're going to say, unless they can prove me wrong, $10 million. Well, I think we've got a shortfall somewhere, don't we? And so if five of it comes out of this year, and five year comes out of it next year, so be it, but if it's at $2.95 an hour, so what? That doesn't matter. This is it. For a manager, that doesn't matter. The details are the way you con us. You don't want to do it, say, "We don't want to tell you. We don't want to save money on summer school because we don't want to touch summer school." Okay? How much for P, for athletics? Nobody wants to cut athletics, except, guess what? The stellar charter schools around us, and the, and a lot of the private schools don't have an athletics program, and they got waiting lists. Price, no athletics program, pretty doggone good school. A lot of people would like their kids to go there. Poilama High School got, got PE, but they're paying money for it, we are. Okay, then you go down the hill a little ways, and they're all complaining in Poilama about the, about high-tech high, high-tech complex. They don't have a football team, they don't, they've got all that money in their bank, or they're using it for instructional programs. So what's more important? You know, if we say our backs to the wall, and I thank you guys for pushing the staff to comb the, for the, for the fluff in the thing, but it won't get us eighty million bucks, it's good you did it, but we're still stuck with a lot of money that we're behind. But I can entertain shutting down summer school. I can entertain shutting down PE. Athletics is for a special group of kids, and if I match that up against, let's say, And if I match that up against, let's say, Palomar Mountain Six Grade Camp, which is for everyone, it's no choice for me at all. Or if I do it for music, and I, for a district-wide music program, sorry athletics, you know, that's a part of it, I don't know music's special, but it ought to be for every kid. Because the evidence shows that music does more for academic achievement than athletics does. Just prove me, I don't mind. But you know what, it's a, you, you, we're going to take a blow when we go back to our areas if somebody like I, you know, my people in Point Loma are going to say, "Oh, you took away our football team." Yeah, yeah, I had to, because I was forced into it by a bad planning of a state that can't handle educational funding. And if you want me to do away with Palomar Camp instead, that's not going to happen in my vote, but vote for somebody else next time. Because I'm doing what I think's the best thing for the community as a whole, not what's politically right. Now, there are other things, and you know, I've, I've already been through this ROTC battle. It costs us about, you know, somewhere in the range of $2 million, I may be off, you know, a couple hundred thousand. $2 million to offer ROTC in our schools. It's a special group.
So, John, let me interrupt you.
Well, let me finish.
Okay, because we want to focus on that.
You know what? I'm focusing on the issues, I'm, there may be some you haven't yet come up with, but I'm going to tell you when it, if you're talking only about this, sweeping these accounts, I already said my piece.
Okay.
But I'm talking about what the agenda item is, which is budget reductions.
For the mid-year, we're going to do 9, 10 in a different session, John.
All right, but let's talk about that, you know what?
Let's do the 08, 09.
All right, you interrupt me, I'm going to finish my thought then, anyway.
Thank you.
All right. Every time we get into this ROTC discussion, we get this thing, "Oh, you got to tell the federal government about it." So now is the time to tell them for next year. See, we can't cut ROTC this year. It's not a solution, we already kind of halfway solved our 08, 09 with all the cuts we've made, basically, but the big, big hit is next year. The big, big deficit problem, the big, big report to the state through the county is a problem. And the truth of the matter is, I don't think we've got a solution. And I'm saying, if you've got to make budget cuts and you've got to talk about this year and the notification that's required to get yourself out of a pickle next year, you better start putting everything on the table, not just somebody's pet projects or a few things that people don't like, because this is a crisis and we've got to realize it. Now, if we lift it up, oh, site decision-making? The money that you guys are talking about here, this is the stuff that is, currently, they want to talk about, the, all the categoricals. The reason why it wasn't spent was because sites decided not to do it. So when do we decide that they get to not decide things? Today. Sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'll call for the question. Okay, but there was no motion yet.
I just want to make a couple of comments to follow up on, on, on Mr. DeBeck. I think, we haven't heard this from the staff, but I mean, if there are situations in which people at sites were not spending their money and saving it because they have a five-year plan or they do want to put in something in their school, that would be good to know about, because when we're asking about what is this $15 million going to do, we're asking what is the, what is the effect now and what's the effect the long term? And we're willing to face that as long as we know what that is. And I think when, in the issue of borrowing versus just taking it, if we, even if we have to do this, if we at least know, okay, this is what would have been done with these accumulated funds over the next few years, and we're going to have to make a note of that in terms of we need to eventually restore.
You know, I couldn't agree with you more, but I think right now, this is not the run-of-the-mill school year. This is not the run-of-the-mill, maybe, short-term deficit. We are in an economic crisis, and, and, and I understand what Mr. DeBeck is saying, and, and certainly, people in their households, in their households are making these same decisions. They can't say to their kids, if they use their students or their children's money to pay their mortgage rather than have money later for them to go to college, "I'm going to make sure I'm going to give it back to you," because many of them don't even, they don't have a job to give it back to them. They don't even have their house next year. What they do know is that for right now, we can stay in our homes if we use the money that we have in our savings or our investments or whatever is left. I understand this is difficult. I understand that we don't want to touch certain programs, and everything in this district is important. But the most important thing that we can do right now is ensure that our students are in school each and every day. That is the most important thing that we can do. Now, they may, in, in this particular year now, what we're saying is we're not cutting any of the arts that have been planned for this year, as seem to be keep getting indicated. We're not cutting any of, any of the major programs that have been funded this year, they're all still in place. In addition to that, we're not losing any staff. And as I sit here, and, and I've been listening to districts up and down this state that has cut staff this year, that has cut programs this year, and we're sitting here at the second-largest district saying, "Our focus is on our children, keeping our children in school." So we're willing to look at what we have left over, maybe from whatever reason, grants or whatever, to use for this particular year. Now, there is no doubt that as we go into our 9, 10 budget, the conversation may be a little bit different. But right now, I think we need to focus as a board on the rest of this school year, our 08 and 09 budget, and, and, and deal with that issue and the consequences of that and how it relates to the 9, 10 budget. But I want to make it, I think we all need to recognize very clearly that we are not in business-as-usual format. This is not the annual, just get the budget together and get it approved. We, we, we are in economic crisis, not only here, but throughout our nation and our state. And there are people, not, I'm not saying my peers here, but there are people who don't believe this is real. And it is real. It is. You look at our Wall Street, it is real. So we need to be looking at what we can do to make sure that we, as a board, protect what we say is most important, and I think the most important thing, we love our programs, every single one of them. But we do not need to have children on the street because we are closing our schools. We do not need to have children on the street because we do not have teachers in our schools. We do not need to have children on the street because we prefer to have programs rather than providing seats for our students. So, you know, we don't have a motion on this item. We do need to have a motion on this, and we do need to have a second, and we either need to vote it up or vote it down, and then continue on our discussion, please.
I'm, I'm prepared to move to that in just one second. I just wanted, since Mr. DeBeck wasn't here when we discussed the summer school issue, and I agree that the amounts per hour and so forth did not answer the questions that we were looking at. But the thing that did answer the question was looking at the funding, which is not on this list here, but the kind of the intent, the board, at least from my point of view, should be to fund, whatever we do for summer school, to fund it through state reimbursed money, through Title I, through improved technology, and to somehow keep it going that way.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to add on this, that, you know, we had just sent out a budget survey to parents. The single highest category for never consider is one, it's 63% of the parents that responded said visual and performing arts programs, never consider, 63%. Athletics, ninth and 12th grade sports, 66% said never consider. And, you know, I'm, I'm, these are the, the two highest. Out of everything that the parents responded to, this was the most resounding, "Don't do it," that we got. But that's what's on the table right now.
Can I make one comment? The state is taking 15% of our categorical dollars this year. That's about, James, $20 million.
Yeah, 15.38% to be exact.
So they're, they're taking that money. And, and the issue is, is, for instance, in TIG, that amounts to almost $12 million. We can't take and cut $12 million out of TIG because we've used that money to backfill in our schools to have appropriate staff. So I only want to say to you that, that it's the state who is, who has made the decision on the categoricals, and, and that we're trying to do the best we've got with the money so that it doesn't affect. And I, I think President Jackson's correct. The reality, I met with every principal yesterday in the district in three different meetings. All of them understand we're in a crisis. They all understand we're going to sweep every balance at the end of this year in order to be able to help next year in any way possibly we can do that. Does anybody want to do that? No. Do we want to do it? No. But they understand it, they understand the crisis. Now, do they still say, "I need this and that," and they'll try to, to get anything they can? Absolutely right, that's what we hire them as principals to do, for their schools and their kids. They understand where we are, they understand the sacrifices that are going to have to be made.
Well, I'd like to say that, you know, we've been through this before, Mr. Morris, and sometimes our priorities shake out differently. I don't think anybody could ever accuse me of not taking this financial crisis that we've been in seriously. And there will not be children on the street, that's an overly dramatic statement that really sends chills through. It's not a matter of children on the street, it's a matter of prioritizing the educational program. And I don't agree with these priorities.
Okay, I, I'm trying to make a motion, I just first want to say that, make clear that there's nothing on this that is discontinuing arts and music programs that are going on through this year. There's nothing on here that is discontinuing athletic programs through, throughout the year and so forth. We are just taking some difficult decisions about money that are on these funds to balance our budget for the remainder of the year. So, I move that we accept these, the recommendations of staff on these particular items on page 11.
Please, the motion is second. Any more discussions or comments? If not, please vote. Oh, John?
Okay. The, you know, it's interesting to see us work in, I'll call it, to try and come up with a one-year solution to a two-year problem. So, you know, you, you can anticipate that money's going to come back in these categories. But then, are you going to sweep it before it ever gets to them? Or are you going to allow them to have this money back that we took? Or are you going to just take it forever until we come out of a budget crisis? And yeah, I agree. This question about kids being put on the street is absolutely wrong. If we cut personnel, we wouldn't be putting kids on the street. We're not cutting personnel. In fact, what you're doing is, you're taking categorical money to help you with a personnel problem. Because some of you pledged that you were never going to make cuts in personnel. But the truth of the matter is, you're going to be back to the wall and have to do it for next year, anyway. And the argument will be, if you're going to be, if you're going to look at two years of budget, you better look at two years of budget and not one, and then say, "Okay, we solved that problem." You know what, when we file our, our report on March 15 to the county, our second annual report, and ask for, they're going to look at two years, that's automatic, they actually look at three. But we're, we're saying, "Oh, well, we solved this year's budget problem," and that gets us out of the hook. But the truth of the matter is, what you don't do about this year will affect the ending balance and will affect next year. And so, if you don't make any drastic cuts out of this year's budget, you're going to have, those deficits are going to be riding on next year's problem. So, you know, don't want to do it? Okay. You want to take categoricals? That's okay. There'll be, somewhere, there's going to be some legal challenge, I'll bet. Somebody's going to say, "You know what, you diverted that money to a place it shouldn't be." And, you know, if, if the money, the categories were cut, you can anticipate them coming back. If this money is only budgeted money, then it should never have been on those accounts, anyway. But people said this is carryover from last year. Isn't it? So it's not this year's money at all? It isn't this year's money, but you're solving this year's money on last year's carryover. Uh, iffy. And I don't, I don't think it's the right solution. I think there's a lot, a lot of better solutions that the board's trying to avoid. So I probably won't vote for it.
Vote. That passes 3-2. Thank you.
All right.
I think we're now going to adjourn to closed session. Thank you for coming out today, and thank you, staff, for your dedicated work. We reconvene upstairs in about five minutes, closed session, board members.